All right. Okay, so. North Plains City Council Work Session Communications today, so. Let's go and get started.
Teres. Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm gonna talk this through. I did sort of practice, but not really. I think it's better when you don't. Memorize anything frankly. So, are you laughing?
No, it's nothing. You're good.
I'm doing. Okay, well, my name is Teres Lang. I am the Communications Consultant for the city of North Plains. I have twenty years' experience in public relations and communications. Prior to that, I worked in television news as a journalist and producer. I started with the city at the end of October. I took over for Corinne Weiss, who was the previous person who had the contract. And so I sort of have only been on this for a couple of months now. And. What else do I need to say about myself? Oh, I have. I have a lot of experience in the public sector. I worked for Lane Transit District in Eugene, Oregon, the Port of Vancouver in Vancouver, Washington, and. I was a consultant on the Interstate Bridge Replacements Program, which is the new bridge that they're putting over the Columbia River. Additionally, I have extensive private sector experience and some of the industries I have served include transportation, infrastructure, economic development, energy, travel and hospitality, and many others. My main areas of expertise in communications are media relations, issues management and crises and reputation management. And so I'm going to give you an overview of the current plan, which is quite extensive. Did you see it? A long document. And the former Communications Consultant Corinne did an excellent and outstanding job of writing that plan, but she was very aspirational. And she covered a lot of ground. You know, North Plains is a small town and has limited resources to execute the plan, so. I want to make sure that we keep in mind as we talk about it that the resources are staffing, time and funding, and we have to keep that in the back of our mind as we go through this. So, first slide, second, I'm not pushing the slides, just pushing the slides.
I am.
I'm not seeing them.
Could I, could I say something about?
Are you gonna be nice?
It's, it's less about you and more about Corinne.
Oh, yes, we love her so much.
Yeah, she's great. Yeah, the previous, so. The previous consultant, Corinne Weiss. She was in the, in the, basically it just started the second. Contract and had worked with the city on the communications, the first communication strategy, but when you're about to see is, I believe, the second one. And I think, as, as, as you. Kind of, as Teres said. One thing that has kind of been a transition for us and working with Teres and Teres picking things up after Corinne had to stop consulting for family health reasons. What's true about Corinne is that. This North Plains contract. For the amount of month, you know, for what we paid her, which is basically the same on a monthly basis, you know, Teres has basically just taken over, so it's, it's the same fee. Corinne had a very different approach to consulting and working with North Plains because it was, this was overwhelmingly the only contract she had, so she. She kind of, she wasn't balancing a lot of other clients and this sort of thing, like a typical consultant, and so she was kind of like a remotely working city staff person, like this was her only thing. And so what we found is that what she was, what all the different things she was able to do or willing to do. Was a ton, and that was kind of because she did everything, like, everything. And we have a more typical professional consultant than Teres and that, you know, she has different clients and juggles and. And so, I, I kind of want to just underscore that Teres' point about budget and time and staffing is. If, if Teres was more like Corinne and this, and we were her only client, and this is all, all she did. We wouldn't be having this conversation because it would just be a very different equation from a time perspective. But, you know, kind of moving forward, you know, the, the type of consultants that are like Corinne and can do that are far fewer in between. Then, you know, kind of a more, you know, a consultant that has a few different clients and has to juggle that and, and time spent on different things. So I just kind of wanted to. It's kind of a couple of different situations. Sort of thing.
Yeah, and yeah, exactly. Okay. All right. I guess we're on about the third slide now, aren't we?
Let me, maybe, let me make sure I'm sharing.
Can I clarify something?
Yeah.
So I, I've worked with Corinne quite a bit, and when I looked at this, I thought, oh, Corinne was instrumental in the foundational documents.
She absolutely was.
To really set up the branding and the various pieces, you know, that is not the implementation.
That's right.
And, and so I think that's a different, I think it's a different type of consulting work, not just that they're different in the way they work, but really the focus. Was different, so she created a strong foundational document. From which to build. Yes, probably ambitious to figure out the two-year.
You know what? I loved it. I was reading through it and I thought she just got a great creative mind, you know, but, but it didn't take into account, you know, again. The ability to create time to do some of these things and, and the money that the city actually pays. But that's, you know, when you do a document like that, you do kind of want to shoot for the stars. Why not? I mean, you never know what's gonna happen, so. You just, it's a balance, but yeah, thank you. And the other thing too that I want to be very clear about, which you probably already know. I'm not a graphic designer. I don't have graphic design background. I've learned a lot about graphic design and that kind of goes with branding as well and, but when I was at the Port of Vancouver, I was running the department and. Supervising the brand manager and the graphic designer and all of the elements that, so I know how to do the management of those things. The actual sitting down and, you know, spacing things out perfectly on a document is not my strong suit, but I sure can write, so. I write good talking points, for sure. All right, I think the next slide is, the second slide was a picture of me, and then the third, the next slide, I think is the one we want. So, we're gonna get into the background of the North Plains Communications Plan. I want to be really clear about this plan. This is the living document that's here now. That was adopted and agreed upon by the previous city council. Does not mean you are wedded to any of this. I'm just taking you through what's there. And we don't want to, I think, if, if, one of the pieces of advice I do have is do not throw out the baby with the bad water at the end of all of this because. There are some very good things in, in this document that we should keep. Little things like, and we'll get into it later, like what are our goals or what are our values, that kind of stuff, we can, we can change, but. Some of the tactics and strategies I think we should keep and, and focus on going forward, so. There, there are two types of information that cities and municipalities provide to its residents. Legal notices such as public meetings, which are required by law. And informational notices such as emergency communications, city policies and community happening such as. The Noodles and Doodles event, or the Easter egg hunt, or the upcoming Memorial Day event that's gonna happen this weekend. And there are three primary reasons why a city needs to have a communications plan to provide valuable information to the residents of the city. To create a sense of community with residents, building a sense of trust and a sense of reliability and confidence in government. And to provide staff and others, including the city council, consultants and stakeholders with a guide. For how to achieve the previous two reasons, which is to provide information and build trust and have goodwill in the community. Okay, next slide, please. So, this is a little bit out of order in the actual document itself, because I wanted to get to this first. The communication goals, I'm trying to kind of lay a foundation for you. The communication goals are the foundation of any. Plan, and so this again was adopted and created by the last city council. I could go through each of these, but I think you guys will be able to, to look through this. And I want to make sure, the reason why I also have this up here is to make sure you understand that this document, the way that Corinne laid it out, wrote it, developed it. Is standard practice across every communications job I've ever had, the way I was treated in school. So it's got, you know, goals and objectives and strategies and tactics, and that's almost every single communications document that you will ever see, even in private sector work. They, it, it, it is laid out in that fashion, so what you receive today is. Pretty much the, I mean, other than all the beautiful pictures and the. Color stuff that she did and that, it's, it's, the information is laid out exactly the way it's supposed to be. Let's see here. Anyway, I lifted, I lifted a lot of this stuff directly from the plan, just so we're not kind of used, because I, I did at one point take a stab at. Updating a little bit of this before, like earlier this year, and I have that document at home or on my computer. And I can show you my suggestions, but there's a, a couple of, and we can skip to the next slide here too. There's more communication goals. There's a, a communication goal in there that is missing, and I can't remember what it was, but I think it had to do with. You know, creating a media relations plan because that was missing in the original plan. Yes.
So, okay, so forgive my ignorance.
No, it's okay.
Just asking, for a city of our size, would we normally have a media communications plan, I guess?
You know what? You'd be surprised at the smallest companies versus the, or organizations, government and the largest. A plan is basically your north star. It just tells us where we go, how we're gonna talk about the city, how we're going to convey information.
Yeah.
What our message platform's gonna be, and. I don't know. The more you repeat. Your brand identity, the more people get it in their heads, right? So, this is who North Plains is.
Yeah.
Right. And so, a plan, you know, I don't know, I've never worked for a city, I guess this is the smallest entity I've actually ever worked for. But this was here before me, so she made one and, and she felt that it was important. But I think it's a good idea, because again, it's the guide for how we convey information to our, the residents, but also. Gives us the idea about what we want to let people know.
So, in context to media relations, you're speaking to external messaging.
Yes, and we're gonna get, and we're gonna get to that part in a little bit.
Right, messaging.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay. I think I'm just not there yet, but that's okay. You'll see it when we get there, and. But these are basic goals, like you'll read each of these, let's see. Like, for instance, facilitate public engagement, participation in decision-making processes, which is on the previous page. That's just a, a goal that you want to have as, as a community, to be able to, it's, I've heard this. These people talk a lot about it in the last few months, how important that is, so that's one of the major goals. That you want to foster through a street communication with your, with your citizens and your residents. And you can do that through a good communication plan. I think, next one, there you go, you're ahead of me already now. These are different sections of, this, these actually come before the communication goals, but it's in the branding part, and again, like I said. Do not assume that the city council goals there are gonna stay the same. You may like some of that, you may not like some of that, and we will talk about that at another time and. And figure out, you know, what your goals are in terms of how you want to, again, convey the identity of the city. To certainly the residents and to the broader, broader community. So these are brand values up here, the guiding vision and city council goals. Oh, I'm sorry.
Has our, has, has the city councils pillars, guiding pillars and goals. Been shared with you at this point?
I've seen them. I have not in, you know, where, right.
I'm not asking that they, that they showed up on here.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know that you had seen that.
I've seen them, and, and that's, I think Bill and I talked earlier today about the idea that I think you're gonna have a visioning. Plan at some point.
Yeah, well.
Maybe.
Well, I think what I was gonna say, what I was gonna say was. Out of the. Now, this, a city doesn't typically pay for a big. Visioning process. There's been no, like, the last visioning and goal setting or goal. Mission statement and visioning that the city has done was ten years ago. And it's. Beyond time. You, your population's doubled, almost tripled. It's time to kind of go through that exercise. That's something that we typically partner with the state on. On funding for it, but. You know, part of the planning and part of the, part of the budgeting thought process. For planning was to kind of be a part of that at some point in the next two years. So that's what I mean by that, is that. You know, it, it, you know, it, it's, 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 it's time to go down the path of a new vision and, and, you know.
Yeah, I think most.
And public outreach process.
We did some of the work in terms of that strategic pillars, which, which is a foundation for visioning. It's one approach to go at it in terms of doing that kind of work. So I think that you'll find that there's some similar things in terms of, you know, vibrant small-town feel, for example, or. Excellent stewardship by the, by the council and the city.
In a perfect world, a person who has the job in-house or as a consultant of director of communications or the communications person. They would create the communication plan based on the strategic plan, and since the strategic plan is ten years old. I think we should probably wait, and one of the things that I mentioned to Bill earlier today also was that. There are some things we can do right now that would make things better. It's some obvious fixes that I frankly haven't had time to do or have had the ability to do in terms of. My knowledge, things on the website, because I'm not super strong with, with the website, but. So those things we can do immediately, but the bigger, broader, like. How do we want to convey the city's identity to the rest of the world? And, and the reason why that matters is because. You have funding on the line. If, if you don't know who you are, how you want to communicate who you are as a community, you're gonna be passed over for grants. Funding from the state. People will not want to apply for jobs necessarily if they think there's. Any confusion about who we are as a community. So this is, there's, there's real world consequences to. To not doing that kind of work, so I think it's really important that that happens, and then after that, we can put together. Maybe a, a more improved version of this plan with your specific tailored thoughts, ideas, goals. Desires, but again, it's not to say I don't, I can't do stuff right now to make things better, because I can, so. Okay, next slide, please. This is, I've got two slides of key messages. The reason why I have this in here is because, again, if any entity or municipality wants to communicate its values and who they are. We will do it through key messages, and these are. And these are not, okay, let's say you did go to the Noodles and Doodles event. And you're talking to the regular folks that are residents of North Plains. You're not gonna say, "North Plains is an open and collaborative city striving to provide excellent medical services for residents, businesses. And community." You say, messages are simple. They just be. Put it into your own words. And that's also how I write talking points for, if you were giving a speech or something. This is how I write talking points. You can't talk to ordinary people like this. I mean, you can, but, you know, you want them to actually like listen to you when you're talking to them instead of tuning you out. I hear fiscal responsibility and I'm like, I don't want to know anything about that, so. But these are the key messages. They're very good. I think I did have a suggestion for an additional one. I can't quite remember what was in my notes on the other document, but. And then the second slide is the rest of those key messages, but this is the thing that if you keep repeating this over and over and over again, this eventually becomes basically who you are. In, out in the world. Again, we can massage these, we can change these up. This is what I call the text that you would put on the website, the fancy text, right? This is not how we talk. Okay, next slide, please. This slide represents, I think, in my opinion, the most important information you need to. Execute a communications plan. If you don't know who you're talking to or what you're, who you're trying to reach, then there's no point in having a communication plan. So our audience is there. I, I added media and the broader public, including neighboring cities, because people are watching. The communication tools that we have are listed over there on the right. And we can talk about tools if you want to. Let's see, I had a little note in here. I know the tools are particularly interesting to the city council because there's been discussion at past meetings. About how we reach the community and whether there are better tools or whether we can improve the tools that we have. And at this point, we don't have any other tools that are available, really, to the city that wouldn't be too expensive or incredibly time-consuming. For instance, one of the tactics later on in the, in the document is. And I think Andy wanted this, a podcast, a city podcast, and. I have a list of questions in this document tonight that I could tell, and I could say, okay, where do we start? Who's the host? What are the topics? How often do we do it? Who produces it? Where do we get the money to pay for the production? Studio and all that. I mean, just a million questions about how we do this thing and how we do it with a small budget, so. It's a tool. Is it a tool we can use someday? Maybe. Yes.
So, not to get too far down into the weeds on how, but I think one of the things, and I cannot remember, I'm sorry, who brought this up? It may have been council or it may have been public comment, but somebody asked about people that aren't on Facebook, things like that. How are we reaching them? So I guess. I would ask you that, and have we thought about things like Substack or, I think, can the county use a code red now?
I'm sorry, what is, what, what county is using what?
Washington County uses code red. It used to be, it used to be flash alert.
Oh, yes, like, yes, okay.
So it's, it's the advert flash alert.
Okay.
So things like that, where we can text or email people they can opt in and out. How we, how, are we looking at those things? Are those even viable? I don't know, I'm just asking because it. It's a question of how do we. Not everybody's on Facebook, and honestly, after the last year, I think most people want to delete Facebook.
Facebook because of that, okay.
So I'm just thinking about, are there ways that we can have opt-in? And, and that's not so much the how, I was throwing a little example.
Additional social media.
Yeah, that's additional social.
Addition, in addition to, yeah, because you could put the same message out everywhere, but it's just, I was just asking.
I can look into things like flash alerts. Flash alert, I think, does charge a fee, but maybe you can get it through the Washington County Sheriff's Association. I actually knew the guy who started it, and he is, I think, retired now, because he's made a lot of money, but. But we can look into it and we can look into ways, like maybe of how other smaller cities do it. But honestly, I've looked at, the one thing we did talk about earlier today was, we're not utilizing LinkedIn enough, and I think you were at the Economic Development meeting the other day. We need to do that for more business-type stuff. I mean, it's not a good place to. You know, I mean, you could say, hey, we have a Memorial Day event, come, you know, to the Memorial Day event, but it wouldn't, I get, I don't think it would get as much traction, but. If we put together a good economic development plan with some messaging there and we start. Seeding messages into LinkedIn about, come check out in North Plains to start your business or just check out what we have available. I think that is, because that was very effective at the Port of Vancouver, LinkedIn. But yes, you're right. I mean, I have really tried to look at a ton, other than. Other than going door-to-door and knocking on every house in the city and saying, we have a meeting coming up, or. The beavers are at it again and their dam is flooding the road. I don't know how we would do that. Facebook and Instagram seem to be the most immediate if people use it.
Yeah, so I realize that's also a staffing and time issue, but my other question is, is that there have been comments made about, in the same, in the same vein, about information, that if they get the, if they opt. To pay their, if their electric or their water bill. In, in one way, you don't necessarily get the newsletter.
E-bill.
Well, the e-billing. So that is on, that is also on me a little bit. There is an e-connect newsletter. I have not been sending that out. The reason why is because. It really has taken me all this time to get used to what the heck I'm supposed to be doing every month with the newsletter printed by itself. Like, I still am not exactly sure what day the drop dead date is. I know it. I know you do, but I hate fucking you guys because you're so busy. Yeah, anyway, but they, it, it's gotten much easier and, and it's more almost second-hand at this point, but at the very beginning, I did not, and poor Corinne, she could not. I was not gonna call her during her time and bother her.
Well, so I think that was a key thing, is that, that's a piece of information that's, that's missing at this point, and I didn't understand that that was how, why some people got it and some didn't.
There is, there is an email list, and, and I'm assuming that email list is for the e-connect. Is that correct? Or is it some other email list?
There is an email list, but. There's a bit of a story there. It's, it, the e-connect email list is, is, my understanding is it's people who just kind of signed up to get it.
Right.
And. I, with Ashley's okay, I would just like to send it out to every single water account holder and have them opt out of that. Be good.
Okay.
I agree.
That's a great idea.
Instead of limited opt-in, we ask them to opt out. We won't bug them anymore, but at least the, your starting baseline of who we're reaching with it.
Right.
Is everybody narrowing it down rather than incrementally adding?
You have a database ready, right?
And that might be fine. We might not need flash alert if we did that, because then we could also use that.
Because it would, it would, we, and actually, at the Port of Vancouver and with Lane Transit District, we, if there was an emergency, like a snow day or something for the transit, we would send out an e. Quick e-alert like, hey, we're running behind or we canceled this route or whatever.
The only, the only legal exception really in there, and again, like I said, I'll just ask Ashley to check off on it, is we have to give an opt-out. Yeah, just do an unsubscribe or something, yeah.
There might be a few other, there might be a few other legal provisions.
But we can, but we can get it, but actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know we spend a lot of money on the app. And we don't utilize the app.
I, I wanted to ask you guys, because I couldn't even download it for the first three months.
It like, disappeared from my phone automatically, so how did that happen to you?
I didn't even get to, I tried putting it on my phone like three months ago and it was not, and I kept trying and it wasn't doing it, and I thought, and then yesterday or the day before, it finally did. So.
I used mine.
But, but have you been using it this whole time, council? Yeah?
I downloaded it when it first went out and said, hey, we have an app.
Oh, yeah, right.
And then, yeah, I mean, I, I, I go between, I have it saved on my. My, my web, web links. I can go really quickly that way and not go to the app.
It seems to me the app is just basically takes you to places on the website, and one of the things I did discuss with Bill earlier today was, I, I will get in touch with the company that created it for us and find out. How I check analytics and how we find out how it's being used, who's using it, if it's actually being used.
Well, I just tried to, I hit calendar and it says no events.
Well, it's not, they pull it off the Google Play Store.
You have to click view full calendar.
Yeah.
And then it'll take you to the city website.
Well, anyway.
That doesn't seem like a useful tool. Like, I don't know, I was thinking more of using it as like a flash alert thing, like, hey, the water must come in.
Pushing it.
You could push notifications on it, and it would be great. I just, I, I couldn't get it on my phone for months.
Well, we'll, we'll check, we'll check into it. I guess, the, the thing, the thing that we'll also balance that against, we'll, you know, Teresa's gonna. Check in all that. But there have been companies that have emerged with, with, back when that was created, it was kind of up in each city to work with. An app developer to come up with a custom app, and that's what you see.
Right.
But since we did that, there have been companies that have emerged that. Have a platform app that they just swap out the name of the city and your information and links to your stuff, and then in some instances. Merging or, or having access to the Fa, you know, Facebook platform or the Instagram, so it's. It, there's been, there's a lot new since that was developed, is what I'd say. Might be a good idea, so.
Well, I just feel like, yeah, we're not utilizing it. We paid a lot of money for it, and if it's defunct, it's defunct, but if it's not, then we should look at what's the purpose of an app. Be on our website.
Economic council or the EDC.
EDC.
Is that right, T L A?
Yeah.
But I mean, I'd yell over that with the, the local business tab on here.
Yeah, yeah, but I will check into it, but like I said, I tried for, for like at least two months to try to get it downloaded onto my phone and it, it, just, and you said it disappeared, so I'm sure there was a glitch of some kind.
It could have been like a firmware update or something weird.
Yeah.
Well.
Or offloaded unused app.
But like, to your point, if we could, if, if we did find a way to make it more useful, however that is, and, and it was a reasonable price, I mean, maybe that's something that. Economic development can run with, like, once we get it up.
Yeah, it would, it would be a tool for them as well, and maybe even Public Works if there was, like I said, if the beavers were damming up the road. I know, I know you guys think I'm harping on that, but the first time you called me and said, we have a problem with the bee, I started laughing because I just. So sorry, I didn't realize there was really a problem with beavers out here.
Hashtag small-town line.
Yeah, it's adorable.
So, so we could look at upgrading that or. So then we could look at upgrading that or revamping it in some way that would make it more useful.
Yeah, or finding a new one, new finding a new one.
We want advertise on it too.
But but Counselor Dunbar, uh what, if if people don't use Facebook or other social media, will they use something? Do they all have cell phones? Because my mother is is eighty-seven and does not, she has a cellphone. She doesn't really know how to use it.
She would probably latch on to the physical newsletter that came with her water bill. And then those who are staying off of social media would use your app or your website.
I would want demographics, or that's kind of a misnomer. I work in Tuck and you'd be surprised with some of our. Our clientele, so it can go either way.
But I think also it's, I think the E-news newsletter is awesome, like that's what I was. More where I was going with it, and then if we had, is there a way that in the event of a.
Real emergency.
Real emergency, could we get an email out?
Yeah. Yeah, and Flash Alert, Flash Alert is the way no, most municipalities do that.
And I, I'm, I don't want to get into the how, I was just curious if we had thought about it, that was my question.
And just, I think we would have to also think about which are our priorities going forward, so, you know, I think if we have fully operational. E-newsletter and newsletter and then, and then start adding in, you know, what's the next thing? And, you know, we do know there's, there's Facebook and there's following, you know, there are people who. Take the post from the city and post it onto the community pages and things like that. Um but, you know, there's a growing group on Substack, so as it moves, you know, as we grow, do we move it over there? What's the priorities? And we can start to look at that among all these things, you know, because I have some questions just about the website. And so, you know, um to make it.
Yeah, and and I was just gonna say that that, just so that people know, if you don't know what Flash Alert is, that's the organization that puts the um. Flash news that comes up, like, um you know, when we have a snow day at school. And they put the, it on the crow, the thing at the bottom of your TV screen, and they say, these are the. School districts that are closed for today, or if if there, God forbid, were some other horrible emergency, it would be the same thing, that there's. It, and it's almost related, I think, to that annoying, you know, when they do that, it's an emergency. And I hate that. It's always in the middle of something really good that I'm watching on TV.
And and the schools have been using Flash Alert for a while too, that's how I originally found it, because of our kids.
Yeah, and it's, it's a good tool, but it's really only used in emergencies or like, you know, snow days or something.
But to Counselor McCovales's point, I think it's priorities, but I think the E-newsletter, in my opinion. Would be a great win for us, as long as, as long as we can get legally, we're okay.
Yeah, and honestly, it's not hard to do, I save the E-Connect as a PDF, and I think if we just mail that out, it would be. And if there's already a list created, we might need to change the list a little or add to it, because we've had so many people move into town. But, you know, we could just get that information and and then they can just opt out. With the caveat, we're not trying to upset you, we just want to keep you informed. If you don't like this, you can opt out, or something like that.
I like that, yeah.
Anyway, so right now, these are our tools, um and of course, the library and the police department each have their own. Uh uh different tools, and I have to say, Robyn's team makes my life so easy. By having their own kind of world that they live in and do their own stuff, so. Um it's, it's good. Um okay. Uh next slide, please. Strategies, oh, we've got only twenty, twenty-five minutes, okay, strategies. Uh these are the primary strategies that were in the current um communications plan. Uh just so you understand, the city brand management is, you know, obviously branding and look and feel of the brand. City council communications, I did write this down, hold on. Um it's, the purpose is to support city council communications, keeping our elected officials informed of city services and initiatives. And enable two-way communication with the community regarding priorities and decision-making. Um external communications and engagement um have a whole bunch of things underneath that heading. Uh in the tactics section, and basically, it's what uh Councilwoman Hatch-Torn was, was. Um talking about earlier, external communications, that includes media relations, that includes stakeholder relations. Let's see, it's the out, it's the outside audiences that we're trying to reach. Um uh and and the purpose, of course, is to create more two-way communications with the broader community. Employee communications uh is you, your first line uh out in the community are your employees, they're your number one advocates. So you want to make sure that you have an active employee communications plan for them, and then, of course, you can't. Um go forward unless you're measuring and figuring out what's going right and what's going wrong, so we have to have measurement tactics as well. Let's see, let's skip to the next one. And this is the tactics slide, and I didn't put, I did not, listen, the tactics section is ten pages long. And I was not about to make a slideshow for you on every single one of them and to end. Bog you down. You can read through it, but these are the basic headings for each of those, and they relate directly to the strategies. Um so you'll see when you go through there, and my suggestion is that you take notes and write, you know, print it out and write on it. About what you like and don't like. You will see things in there that, like I said, are incredibly aspirational. I think there's a. A welcome packet to new um new residents that they wanted to develop, and it's a. I I don't know about, I'm this old, does anybody remember Welcome Wagon?
I do.
Yes.
I used to do it.
Did you?
Yeah.
It's a, it's, that's the idea behind it, I think, and it's a great idea, but um. I I don't know where it fits in in terms of, again, the the budget and and employee time and and all of that.
It was free, I went and, I went, I I I walked around people's houses.
Well, no, it's free. It was free when it was the Welcome Wagon. Company, but if the city takes that on.
No, I used to do it. The, the.
Oh, you used to do it as a city councillor?
Yeah, I'm James Page, I'm a city councillor. If you read today, I just want to welcome you, I say, here's some local businesses.
Really kind of charming.
If you have any questions, please call somebody else.
Packet too, that they put together.
That's what it is.
Yeah, and so, hey, call me.
Yeah.
Local businesses could put their coop like.
Is it, is there, and I don't know if there is, I'm just saying, I wonder if there's any way that. The city could. Uh maybe help somehow coordinate it, but other organizations kind of own it, like it sounds like that's maybe what they do.
It's done by the Chief of Commerce.
Yeah.
They would, they would, they would sit there and have a uh. They would go in a room and just.
Stuff package.
Just build them, and I'm out, so okay, James, here's a list of forty and fifty people to, to contact. And I'll go to the doors and there's at home, so I'm okay. I get them all. So use a lot of time, so.
Okay.
But yeah.
So, yeah, it sounds like maybe that's something the chief.
They only have pretty havoc, they're, they might have that already going, but it was in the communications plan, and I remember thinking that.
They're, they're packed, they're, they're doing packets. I signed up to help do the package, and they're waiting for some more info.
Well, then that's something we don't need to worry about, right? Other than to make sure that we put a, maybe a um uh marketing or material in there that says, yeah, if you have problems, contact your city council.
Mm-hmm, well, I think also.
Specifically.
I think, contact James, yeah. Uh I think also, maybe it's, it's looking at it differently in that, you know, what does it mean to be, to say welcome? You know, from the city, from the council, you know, is there something where, you know. We have a little welcome blurb somewhere, you know, is there something where, you know, there is a video. It's done, that does, you know, down the road, I'm not saying spend the money to do all these things now, um. You know, I know that there is a city running a podcast on a very low budget, um but, you know, and I don't think the podcast's the answer either. I just think that maybe that we could sort of say, oh, you know, we don't have to have this obvious foot quill package that's delivered all the time. It could be that we decide to go visit the new neighbors in a new neighborhood as councillors on a Saturday. You know, or that we have volunteers or something. Or we have, or we have a town hall meeting to invite people to come and meet everyone. I think that that's what state of the city is for a lot of the cities. Where they invite the community to come in and hear what's going on and, um, you know, and that's part of that communication.
Well, that's, that's right, and that's the thing that if, when you go through this and you look at each of the tactics, you'll see, and you just make little notes like that. Because because one person's idea can be built, built upon as you go forward and. Uh maybe it it would be easy for the city to do something like that and not cost money or whatever, I don't know, but I think. Um we have to consider, um we have to consider. I'm telling you, ten pages of tactics is a lot of pages of tactics, so just take a look, I'm not. I'm not like even kidding when I saw it, I was like, wow. So, okay, um let's see here, what's the next slide?
Recommendations.
Recommendations, yay, okay, so obviously, there's, there can be, when we do the other exercise that Bill is maybe hoping to do, visioning. Um we can do a deeper dive into really uh uh bolstering and bumping up this plan. Um but there are ways that we can, um things we can do right now, and I think simplify the plan, like cut things that we know we're not gonna do. We, we can't afford to do a video right now, so let's just get that off the list. We'll hold it in over here, like what I call my parking lot of ideas, but um for another time, but. But for the next year or two, I think there's gonna be things you you'll be able to see, that we just can't do them right now. There just isn't time or staff or or money to do it, so.
The thought was to do a little Civics class, you know, how girls show YouTube videos.
Well, you know what, that is a really good idea.
If you have a budget, the guy spends five minutes making it easy to do to digest, this is how budgets work.
Right.
Next one, I'm gonna look at beavers, here's how to troll beavers, you know, so that's.
But but you know that there is like Budget One-O-One on the website, right? That people can read.
Yeah, but somebody talking is easier than reading.
You think, okay, well.
It depends, I prefer reading.
Well, I, I think it also, how often it comes up, like, yeah, it's there. And if I want to hear about Budget One-O-One, Budget season's happening, right? We're hearing there's budget meetings out there. So that if in the newsletter, for example, there's something about. Here's, here's something happening with the budget right now, or there's a little video clip that's on the homepage um on the website that says, you know, this is that. Points you to the more information, you know, gets you there, but there's not. But there's not a consistent sense of, you know, there's a lot of information on the website, but you know, you have to be willing to dive. And keep diving to find it, and so, and that's important for some people, but some people just want to know, I think, one of the other councillors brought up, you, how do you? How do you take care of a tree that, a street tree that's died in front of your garden, you know, or how do you, how do you do things? And we have a lot of information that's not getting out. It's just living on the website, so we're not connecting our communication tools so that we could connect it to newsletters, like if we. I think if we just talked even about the newsletter. As the basic form and said, you know, we want the newsletter to include these kinds of things in in newsletters as a standard for laying out the newsletter.
Yeah.
And I know some of that's there, but if we said, oh, we want to always have something about, you know, how to do something in the city.
You don't need to do like every, every week. Here we go about budgets again, it could live there for twenty years.
Yeah.
Like, hey, this is how budgets work, this is how you uh.
Well, unless the law changes or the process changes, right? Yeah.
This is what you do about trees, unless, unless something, unless something changes, right? But that could live in there for every and a half. Maybe like a two-minute, you know, quick blurb, maybe like a YouTube city YouTube page, and just clearly, don't, don't, don't do the. Just share it. You know?
Yeah.
Also, just throwing one more idea out. Is, um I guess something I do for my own work as well is Fun Fact Friday.
Ooh.
So just something quick hook, line, sinker, right? Like, did you know? X, Y, Z. And then to learn more, click blah, 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 and it could take him to, you know, a page on the website as well, but. That way it's not so content heavy, because I know sometimes, you know, scrolling on social media and you're like, oh, that's, that's gonna be another day. Uh you could just do a quick one or two sentences with a link to learn more.
I think if we could figure out a formatting or just like a template for that, and then, because that would make it much easier for any person at, on staff or me to do. But we talked earlier about my limitations with time, right? And um and the staff's limitations with time, so. It, we, you know, that is a big factor, we, we have, we really like all these things, but they do take time to write them and create them. And uh Michelle, uh Counselor, I'm just gonna call you Michelle, I'm so sorry.
Um just like James gets on the, the door. Let's go back to, um so, uh my thinking is, that's, that's part of the idea of like, sort of streamlining the. What does the newsletter have in it? What's the content? So that we know that those kinds of things are coming forward.
Right.
And it's all, for me, we talked earlier about. The communication and the trust and the communities, and what we're not seeing is the connection between. The wealth of information and who the city is and what the city does. And the community getting that information. Now, I know it's all there, and it's gone out in different ways before. But I think even just building a strategy and a plan where, you know, everyone gets that. It's not magnets anymore, I hear, but, you know, that thing that says, here's your, here's the, here's the weather address. You know, and here's the Facebook link, and here's this, so you can stay connected. And then using the things like the idea of the Friday fact, to sort of pull information in, that sends them over there to go for those that. Want to know more, you know, and just kind of keep connecting it back and forth, and so that we are. Um there's a better sense of who the city is. The city has been very small and grown up in its grassroots way, which is great for a city. And um but there has to be a connection, like when we're talking about the branding, you know, I would like to see. The city's brand on everything that we sponsor and do, so that people make the connection, this is a city program. This is a city thing rather than we don't do anything, uh but part of that is just coming up with those. Strategies. To do that.
So if I could, I think just kind of summarizing, because we're, we're getting close on time, I'm. I think what might be helpful is if, if there was like one, like, one thing that we could get out quickly, like the, the Friday, you know, thing. The line sinker thing, if if we could make a, a template that was super easy to use. And then have some content available that, you know, or some, something, just something small to do to get stuff. Off of the. Deeper parts of the website out into people.
But where would we, but where would it live?
Why, yeah, so, well, first a template and then figure out where we're putting this, is it a front page or website?
It could be a Facebook post.
Sure.
You know, there's not a lot out there. Going on in the city Facebook page.
But again, but again, we come back to the people that. Counselor Dunbar talked about, which they, they're not on Facebook, they're not.
So it could be in the newsletter.
My, so if I could suggest, this is where I was kind of getting at with the, either the texting or the email. If we could put the same thing on Facebook and in the email blast, I don't know if this is allowed, I'm just saying, this is an idea, don't quote me on this. I'm just saying, this is a thought. What, if people were up to, up for that. Could we blast it to where, um we used to use it, I forget the tool, but it was a tool that would blast to all the socials at work and um. And. It was an email text.
Was it, um Sprout Social or something like that?
Similar, but yeah, one of those. It was one of the ones that managed all our social media accounts, but so, so we would put stuff out there and then it would hit through like. All the channels that we had available to us, including email and text. And if we're able to do something like that, because it doesn't need to be anything specific, and an email's not gonna be something super long, but just a quick blurb that goes on Facebook and goes out on an email. I'm wondering, I'm not saying this is a good idea, I'm wondering.
The, the doubt, the, the thing that I, is in my head is, if we do an email blast every single time we have something, they're gonna be mad. Because the, the city's sending me too many darn emails.
And then maybe the emails are a summary, maybe they only go out once a month, and Facebook is, we, I don't know, whatever it is.
E-Connect newsletter.
Or, or in the E-Connect newsletter.
I would like to see that up and running.
Yeah, and, and it's something I think I can do pretty quick.
Yeah. I think that's a good, I think it's a good starting point.
Another thing that um we didn't talk about, and I know we're gonna run out of time, because I have a moment still to talk. So I, it's the um, it's the website, because there's a lot of things that need to be updated. And the links that are connected, and, you know, I don't know if we need to have volunteers to help go through that or what needs to happen, but um. It, it's just got good stuff, it's just how do you get around it all, so.
Send it.
But one of the things too, that Bill and I.
It'd take a lot of work to go through the whole thing.
Yes.
I'm happy to do it, um but.
I mean, as you come across stuff, at least we can, I mean, I've done that.
What we, Bill and I talked about this this morning, definitely, things need to be updated, links need to be updated, things need to be done. And I can't do it because I don't know what's supposed to be there, like content wise, I'm not sure, you know. But it's gonna be, have to be something that each department, we work with each department, and they work on their own content, and they update their links and they update the information. Because there's things on there that have frankly changed, that no longer are true um in terms of. And there's nuances that I need to learn, which I am learning, and the people there in Ohio, I call them once a week, I think, to find out. How I do something on the website, but um. Uh you know, it's, it's, like I said, I am not a graphic designer or a web uh manager. And I'm learning on the fly here as well, um but it's, I think, something that we can work together, uh staff, staff and I can work together.
I have one more uh suggestion, um and it's not, it's, I guess it's part of the communications plan, it's really part of the. Even newsletter and the newsletter, and there's been some talk, we had public comment on it, we had um councillors and the mayor's comment on it. In terms of not having um sort of the voice of the council there anymore. Um, councillors and the mayor's comment on it, in terms of not having, um, sort of the voice of the council there anymore, and I know that it's a challenge, and I understand that fully. To have one person having that role, you know, uh, we are not a a mayor, um. Former government, we're city manager former government, but I feel like that there's a lot of information going out, that saying council's doing this or that. That's not necessarily true either, because we're not putting our voice out there, um, and so, one of the thoughts I had, just to throw out, and it is just thinking time, um, is that. We as a council could operate with two to, you know, like, three of us. Doing a small article for the newsletter that's from the voice of the council, talking about whatever the issues are, or whatever we want to talk about that's coming out for. That sort of thing, where we would decide on it in our first meeting, and designate who's doing it, and could be the same people or not, but really having like three people so that it's the body of the council, the council voice. Coming through, you know, so it's like, oh, we want to talk about the upcoming, uh, budget, budget, or. You know, any kind of, any kind of thing that we have, you know, on the on the plate that we're looking at, um, or in a in a way to kind of keep that council. Voice out there that we exist, you know, I mean, I heard a thing that said we have three hundred and twelve. We could build three hundred and twelve houses in film right now, based on a best calculation that was wrong, and it's like, you know, I don't want to start getting into a bunch of social media word myself. But I do feel like we should, as council, be able to speak together too.
So I I think, I understand where you're going, I think that there's some risk there, I'll call out, um. And I think if we're gonna go down that path, that the first stop would be Ashley, my bidding, because I think there's potential for us to say. Put stuff out there that might cause the cities, put the city in a bad light.
It had, it, so in other words, the, think of the newsletter and all the social media and all the things that come out from the city, right? Uh, other than your own personal pages or whatever, the stuff that comes out on the official sites. It it's like a working newsroom, and as I mentioned at the beginning, I worked in the newsroom, and the news, I mean, it's not as much as it should be, but it should be neutral, frankly. And you can't have, uh, it it really sway one way or the other, because in in the way that you present it, like, again, I'm so old, Walter Cronkite was doing the news. And he was, you know, and that's the way it is, and he would just read a straight news piece, and and that's, you know, other than getting excited about the third grade class that came over to take a tour of the Public Works Building. Um, I try to be very neutral about the kind, the way that I write, and I'm not always writing everything either, by the way, uh, the the police, uh, um. Column comes basically from, um, the sheriff's department, uh, uh, T uh TBFR, they write their stuff, but.
Yeah.
Um, i- i- it's, it, we're a newsroom, like, I'm I'm functioning as the newsroom for the city, and it needs to just be very neutral, and yes.
Also, I think he's.
City council voice would be great, it's just that it it does need to go through somebody's lens.
Yes.
Of course, and I think it needs to be multiple councillors who are doing that, potentially, rather than just the voice of the mayor or a voice of a single councillor.
Yeah, I I think if we were to do something like that, my concern would be the amount of, uh, the time and resources we would need, because we would actually need somebody to edit that down, I think.
I, that would be my job.
We don't, yeah, and we don't have a, um, we don't have a city newspaper, if we did, I would say it'd be a great place for an op-ed, um, but. Since we don't have the North Plains, unless somebody wants to start a newspaper, James.
I've operated that before, so I, I've kind of thought about what's a way to get around, or think about it differently than, and have it be the whole council voice.
I I think it's something to certainly consider, yeah.
Yeah.
I I just think that we have to be careful, the W M is just caution.
It's just food for thought.
You know, I I.
Okay, so the next slide is just basically questions, and we've already kind of gone through a lot of things, but you are welcome to ask me other questions as you're going through this document, and, yes, Katie?
I didn't really have a question, more so as the comments, um, some of them on Facebook, I've seen asking for more information when we post. So like direct links to agendas or direct links to, uh, the library position, which I have seen, I'm I'm deciding, just some of the things I noticed is, like, meet people where they are. You know, push the easy button on our posts.
Which I think goes back to what Paige, or sorry, councillor Paige and councillor Pedro were saying, um, about the. Uh, like the short or the commercial, whatever you call it, and put a link to the website, so maybe that's something with what you're working on, we can try to incorporate.
You, I I can, I will do, I will look into that, yes, but here's the other, the other issue, um, I I'm not sitting next to my computer all day looking at Facebook on behalf of the city. I mean, if you had a full-time person, there could be a person that does that, because there are big companies, that's all their people do, but I I just can't do that, and so when I s-. Uh, when I see it, I try to answer it, but I don't always see it, and, um, there's also, uh, some different. Uh, Facebook groups that I've asked to be included in, and they don't let me, and that's a fine, no problem there, I've been denied by several of them, and it's okay, but I just.
I'll take it first.
I just want to make sure that the information is the correct information, that's all, and and that was the reason why I would like to see it, but I don't see a lot of stuff.
And I don't mean a response, it was more so like, we would post something and like, the picture would be cut off, or like, information in.
That's more me not knowing how to do it, truthfully.
In a subcategory, yeah, that's.
But I'm learning, I'm learning.
Suggesting the response, it's it's the body of the information.
And that actually leads me to follow-up question, though, and again, forgive my ignorance, um, how do small cities normally do two-way communications? I know we have email that nobody apparently.
They have a newsletter, or they have a e-blast, like.
But the, but the return to the city.
Uh, you know what, one of the things I think that is sorely lacking, and I saw in my notes, or maybe it was in one of Corinne's notes, and I think it was her notes that I made note of. There does need to be a page created, and I think it might be in the communications plan, there does need to be a way to send an email, and that someone's monitoring that email. Questions or whatever they want to send, I I thought that there was one.
If there is to go to councillors and to go to things, but it's kind of, you have to take like four steps to get to that message.
Okay, so, so maybe we need to simplify that as well, you know?
Can I ask how many, so what contract hours we have, like, per, do you have like a certain number of hours per week with us? So, you, just so we can have a sense of budget and timing.
I, it's basically, you know, if you really want the truth, I should give you whatever you ask for, but I can't. Um, I have in my mind, and I've discussed with Bill, it's between forty and fifty hours a month, I often go over. Um, because mostly, because I'm kind of learning on on the fly about different things too, so, uh, but it's between forty and fifty hours a month. And, um, I think I can, with what I've been able to, with what I'm scoped to do now, and that's another thing, my scope doesn't include some of the stuff that was in the communications plan, which is also what took my breath away.
What what are you scoped to do?
I'm scoped to do the newsletter, I'm scoped to, I mean, off the top of my head, this is, I don't know all the things. Um, I'm scoped to, God, I can't remember all the different things in the scope right now, but I could send you some of those, or have have Bill do that, it's up to him. But, um, basically, do the newsletter, do all the social media, do the media uh relations press releases when we need them. And, um, but there's not a lot of that right now, and that actually wasn't in the original scope, but I do it anyway, because it's vital, you know, cannot be done. And, um, so, uh, let's see.
So just because we're.
Almost out of time.
Um, let's go ahead and stop here, if you had any one.
I'm sorry that I went over.
No, 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 it's fine, um, let's go and stop here, we'll take a cup, uh, just a couple minutes, be back in two minutes, let's try to get started on time, and everybody out, but thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And thanks for the.
I'm, I'm sorry, I called you all by your first names.
Five work session, all right.